For children.
Demond, Alana Phillips, Veronica Walensky Sorkin, Carol, and Lomis Q.
Check this out. I came very much with. I'm 31 years old. I had my own business. I had my own restaurant. I'm a landlord, three books. I graduated class 2002 out of Bushwick. Let me explain something to y'all. I am a successful black entrepreneur. Black entrepreneur. I'm not coming against charter schools. Y'all do what y'all do. But the reason why the system is messed up is because they want y'all to argue with a public school system. Public school systems raised me. Okay, so there's nothing wrong with getting an education from a public school and a charter school. But, don't get it twisted. Charter schools rock out. They rock out, okay? You're looking at a prime example. I came out of Bushwick. I came right out of this school. I got a very good education. I see some of my teachers that I didn't know they were still here. They helped me become who I am today. I do not work a nine to five. Let me explain something to y'all. Some of y'all that, parents that have kids in charter schools, I get it. Y'all want a special education. You can get that at a public school too. But the reason why our public schools are failing is because they don't have the right resources. They don't have the right money because they want to put money in other places that does not need to be there. No disrespect. But, you're looking at somebody, like I said, I do not have a nine to five. I have not worked a nine to five in three years. I'm 31 years old. 31, my time is up? Alright, 31, but I'm gonna say this. 21, 21, 2019, stand up. Bushwick, stand up.
Good evening. My name is Alana Phillips. I am a teacher at IS-291 and have taught for over 20 years. Licensed teacher in 30 years. For 20 years. The pattern that I have seen during those 20 years is how charter schools have discarded, particularly our special education students. Let the pattern end immediately at the end of the second marking period. We get enrollments of students with special needs discarded from charter schools right before state testing. So their scores don't count towards their schools for their low performing students. They count towards us because they get to keep the federal money because they already received it. Additionally, when speaking to the student when asked, "Why did they come?", they say they were not able to follow the rules and got kicked out of the charter school. From the parents. When speaking to the parent. They say the charter school could not meet their child's social, emotional needs or their IEP, their academic needs. Therefore, therefore, they got kicked out. Parents, please do your research. With New York City Public Schools, you are guaranteed to at least follow the rules. Charter schools do not. They take funding away from our community, from all children. So they can kick children out. They can kick children out for having a social, emotional need. They can kick children out if they're not meeting the New York State criteria. So that's why their scores are higher than many other schools and they can get additional funding. Please, educate yourselves, parents.
Restart my time, please. Good evening, everyone. My name is Veronica Walensky Sorkin. I am the UFT District 32 Representative for this district. I am also a teacher in this school district. I stand here in strong opposition to the expansion of Mesa Charter High School. It does not make sense. We have eight amazing intermediate schools in this district. We have six incredible public high schools. We already have an amazing 6 to 12 in this district. The middle schools in this district already service our ALIS, our special education students, and the talented and gifted. And this very building, IS-291, has a wonderful ELL and special education program. The average 6, 7, and 8th grade student leaves with four Regents credits. This expansion does not make sense. Just this past Friday, February 7th, a joint letter went out from Arthur Sandals and Peggy Chung saying, I quote, "Right now, the three schools in the building, IS-291, Bushwick Community High School and Mesa Charter High School, as well as..."
Fellas from IS-291 and alumni and current students, I stand here today proud to be a freshman at Roland Hayes. My experiences here by far is phenomenal. From learning a play to creating an energy machine that turns on a light. I am proud to be here representing in front of IS-291 and its sixth quarter. But here's the problem. With all of this, we're being pushed out. The school I stand before is a tribute to Roland Hayes, an African-American musician. We will not, IS-291, will not be pushed out. Relationships here will be destroyed and forgotten. So we have no chance, I mean, no choice but to fight back. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Anna Gladys, and I'm one of the students going from the Student Council. And I would like to say, if you guys ever kicked us out, there would be some things that you guys would be destroying. In the middle of the school year that we are in, the test is coming up for us. So if you guys ever kick us out, that means you're interrupting in the middle of the school year. And also, if we gave you your space, if you don't like it, you could just pack up and leave.
Do you hear me? Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Julio Salazar from Columbus Magazine and Media, Alaska's office. And first of all, thank you to all the parents, whether you're from Mesa or from IS-291 for coming out. Because the reality is that this is what parental engagement looks like. When you come out from Mesa, whether you come out from IS-291, this is what parental engagement looks like. And as we were walking in, we heard chants of Bushwick. We heard chants of Bushwick children who are in Mesa. We heard Bushwick chants from our students in IS-291. Who here is from Bushwick? Bushwick, put your hands up. And the reality is that as we walk our streets, we know, we know that our kids in Bushwick have been under-changed for years on end. Our public schools have been short-changed for years on end. For recent immigrants, for our newcomers, for everyone who comes to Bushwick first. Public schools have for a long time been, have for a long time been the first, the first point of entry for our students. So, with the number...
I'm very sorry, everyone. As I said, it hurts my heart to cut people off, but we need to give everyone a chance. So everyone, I'm going to turn, we have a representative from one of our representatives' offices here. So I'm glad to let them in, also from the CCHS.
I know we all want to go home, right? But this is important for everyone. It's important that everyone's here. We need to ensure and we need to know that public schools have long been the first point of entry for our recent immigrants, for our veteran, for our veteran parents who need to put their children somewhere. Public schools have always been the first choice. Now, what we also know is that Mesa also serves our Bushwick children. We know that IS-291 serves our Bushwick children, and we know that Mesa serves our Bushwick children. But we need to ensure that any plan of any expansion of any charter school is to be accounted by the DOE and to ensure that a school like IS-291 who has shown that they are growing, that they are improving, that they are improving, is not undercut by any proposal. Is not undercut by any proposal. Because we have IS-291, we have school administrators throughout the district who have been trying and working with all our parents to ensure that our schools can improve. We know that there's a disenrollment issue across the board in Bushwick. But we have our public schools that are improving. We have our, our school administrators that are working. Now, again, we can't have a plan that puts both of our parents against each other. We're in one building. We're one building sharing one space. But what we need to do is that any plan cannot jeopardize our public institutions. Our public institutions like our public schools. So again, the member cannot stand next to a plan that short-changes, again, our public schools, IS-291. And we need to move forward. We need to cross DOE to the table and to ensure if Mesa does get, if Mesa, if the Mesa expansion does move forward, how will 291 be insured survival? I think that's the conversation that we need to have. That's the conversation that the member needs to have. So again, IS-291, you need to make, you need to make your voice heard, not only here today. Mesa, you need to make your voice heard here today, but also to DOE. To DOE that owes our public schools money. Who's owed money? Our public schools are owed money. So again, again, we need to have a body, we can't solve this here. But again, IS-291, Mesa, make your voices heard to DOE. How can, how can we not short-change our schools? Our public schools, IS-291, again, thank you to our school administrators, thank you to Mesa. This is what parental engagement looks like.
Good night. My name is Anthony Torres and I am a student at IS-291. IS-291 provides you with four regions, Spanish, living environment, math, and new history. It also includes the SHSAT for free, which is a specialized high school test. 291 has good protection slash good security that are friendly and keep the school safe. It has sports programs. These are some of the reasons why Mesa should not take our schools, our space. The bottom line is that Mesa should not take 291 now. This year, I hope to graduate from 291. Mesa, let us be.
Hi, my name is Anthony Torres and I'm a student here at IS-291. I want to graduate from IS-291 with four regions and continue in high school with the great tools I was given here at Roland Hayes. It's science, I have constructed an energy transformation machine that could turn on, off, and on and off a light. It's getting me ready for a career in science and engineering. And social studies, I've learned about Lucy, the skeleton, and now we're learning about different types of religions across the world. I would love to stay the full three years here at IS-291. Also, for my little cousin to come next year and have the same four feeling experiences I'm having.
Hello. My name is España Paga. And I'm gonna say in Spanish because it's better for me. Yo soy madre de tres niños. El mayor está en el grado 10 de high school. Y cuando mi hijo entró a la escuela, iba para high school, yo fui a Mesa, aplicar para mi hijo. Yo sé ellos mandan aplicar online y también fui personal. Two times, o sea dos veces, me dijeron que no. They don't have a space. That's they told me. So esto me dijeron que no tenían espacio para mi hijo. Necesitamos escuelas públicas, no privadas. La privada pueden sacar nuestros niños. Pueden decirle que no. Las públicas, no. Please, let us be.
Good evening. My name is Celia Green and I'm from the Citywide Council on High Schools. I happen to be your Brooklyn representative. I'm a proud mother of all six boys who have been public school students and I am a proud public school parent. I really hate to see it disintegrate into this, that people have to fight over space. There should be enough space for everyone. However, District 32 is one of the smallest districts in Brooklyn. They are constantly losing space. It is impossible to offer all the things you need to offer in a high school if you have no space to put the kids and if you have no way for them to enroll. This is not a good suggestion that Mesa be able to take over this space. This is a public school. It is a 6 to 12. There needs to be space for the enrollment to grow. At the same time, the governor, who is trying to make us pay for space for charter schools, should try to come out of his own pocket and his own budget, okay? If he wants to do so, but not take the space away from our public schools and not take the money out of our public schools. Because public schools have to take all children. We have to take the children with special needs. We have to take children who have language impaired. We have to take all children. Another thing I'm concerned about is, in school buildings, you always want to have good neighbors. You always want the schools to get along. You always want people to work in tandem with each other and in tandem with each other. And as far as I know, there's been some issues around safety information that apparently Mesa has not been telling the other schools. So I'm hoping that this will change and that because all schools that have charter school in them have to have a building council, that our schools here, 291 and Bushwick Community High School, would also be an integral part of the building council and have all the information they need and be presented with all the information from the building. Because safety is utmost in importance for all our students. The bottom line here is, there needs no, there needs to be no expansion right now. There needs to be no taking of space right now. Yes, I believe all children need an education, whether they're public, charter, or wherever. But I do think that we need to look at the DOE and get them to find a better way of finding space for each school so that each school has a right to expand. Okay? Not just the charter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm gonna start by saying, we are all family. There's no need for us to fight over anything. Please, go through this. They said they're not taking over, they're not taking additional space in this place. So, so, two, two. The second point I want to make is, please don't let nobody, nobody come between us and start us, and let us start fighting over. No issue at all. Because whatever it is, can be settled and make ends meet. That's true. I am a proud parent of Mesa. And I'm so happy about what they did on my daughter that I enrolled my son in this school. Whatever it is, whatever me that they've been telling you, that charter school takes away, charter schools take away money from public schools, is a lie. Because money, let me speak, please. Let me speak, let me speak, please. If you, if you check, money, the money goes with the students. Money goes with the students. And from 2007, that charter school that has been in existence, the number of public schools enrollment has increased. This is proof, if you want it, I have it here. I'm gonna give it to you. And two, the funding, the funding for public schools has equally increased by 59% from 2007. That is for fact. That is fact. So again, Mesa has said they're not taking over this place. The extension of the beach there, uh, open to get, they don't know, the space is going to be debated at another time. So there's no need for us to even sit down here and talk about this. I have something I'm going to read. This is in confession.
Okay, everyone, thank you very much. We're gonna continue with our speakers, two minutes each. My friend Anna here in the front row went to manage the sign and the timing for me. So look to her. I'm gonna double check. I will be double checking to make sure that it's correct. I want to make sure I track the speakers and making sure all of you have an opportunity to speak. And the person who helped with the signing with the timing. The next will be Jennifer DeHada, Pat Crispino, Nejada Garcia, Lucero Rodriguez, and Linda Sarment. And again, many apologies if I have mispronounced any names.
Good evening, everyone. As a resident of Bushwick, I grew up in this neighborhood. I am now a teacher in this neighborhood. Speaking of opportunities, I went to a public school and I got a over $200,000 scholarship to go study in college. And I came back to my community to give back to my community and make sure that other children like me can succeed, okay? Secondly, we have, most of our students that end up at Mesa High School come from our district community school. I have a student, I have a student and I love her dearly. She was one of my favorite students ever. She went, she left our school at a Level 4, an ELA ANNA, and she ended up at Mesa. And then Mesa wants to try to take the credit for all the hard work that the community schools have put into our children. We are severely underfunded. We are underfunded. The pressures of gentrification in our neighborhood, which I've seen with my own eyes, as someone who's been here my whole life, is creating no...
I'm Pat Crispino. I am the district rep from the UFT for Bushwick Community High School. Mrs. Samuels, I want to publicly challenge you. You say you don't want space? Then why don't you give back some space that you're not using? You want to do that. Bushwick kids get stuck with only a 10-minute lunch because you need space. The IS school, God bless you. You get your kids with four regions before they leave? You're the school that should be expanding, not Mesa. I want everybody that's against this expansion to call Kathy Cashin. She is a Board of Regents and you can call her at 518-474-5889. I promise you, I will get you that number again. This is not right, that Mesa is keeping time. This is the worst meeting I've ever seen in my 33 years with the Department of Education. And I have done many of them. Ladies and gentlemen, our fight has just begun. And we will not stop. And we will not stop.
Everybody, thank you. I really appreciate the suggestion. Everybody. I appreciate the suggestion that we have time favors reach school. And so we have a volunteer timekeeper. I'm asking you to place it in the practice so that you can signal to the speakers when it's like one minute and when it's time. And so we're together and then we can all go, it's not moving. Thank you very much.
I'm a student from Bushwick Community High School. And what I would like to say, there are kids in transfer high schools that come from Mesa and school like Mesa. Y'all do not serve, people have IEP, I know people that have IEPs and y'all kick kids out. Y'all do. Y'all do. Don't get mad, it's the truth. Y'all already take space from us. We have a 10-minute lunch period. Y'all are not considerate of the other schools in this building. And y'all wanna take more space. Listen, y'all saying that y'all don't wanna be in this building, but if y'all don't get approved of where y'all wanna be at, y'all gonna need space in this building. So that means that you're gonna be taken from 2S, 291 and Bushwick Community High School. So that is not fair to our school. We share the gym also with the school. And there, y'all, y'all, it's a lot of y'all. I'm not, I don't have no beef with no students, no teachers, no nothing. But you also gotta be considerate of what other schools are in this building. We don't get all the money y'all get. And y'all not sharing either. Because if this is a community, you won't be sharing the money. And when your school gets shut down, the money stays inside of your school. So I just wanted to say this to y'all. Think about a community. If this is a real community, make sure that y'all share all y'all resources, everything like that. Because I'm a kid and I know kids that come from charter schools and we have to go to transfer schools. And no, nobody's, y'all look at numbers, y'all don't look at people. We are kids. It's about the parents, but it's also about the students. We have to get our education so we can be able to make it in life. Make sure that you be accountable for these kids.
Buenas noches, ¿cómo está la gente de Bushwick? ¿Cómo está 291? ¿Cómo está Bushwick High School por tu comunidad y ya estás? Okay, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Plácida Rodríguez. Soy organizadora de Si hace camino al Rayo Mayor. Por décadas he luchado para que la educación de Bushwick se haga valer, que tengamos educación justa para todos los niños. Pero nos estamos dando cuenta que cada vez más estamos en decadencia. No podemos permitir que sigamos cediendo los espacios a las escuelas semi-privadas porque nuestros niños están siendo desplazados. No están recibiendo la educación adecuada por la falta de espacio. Tiene nuestros niños corriendo para los loches, para la OGN porque no hay espacio ni tiempo para las escuelas públicas hacer sus actividades como tienen que hacerlo. No vamos a ceder 300 espacios, no más. No charter school, no vamos a ceder. Vamos a seguir luchando porque necesitamos tener escuela pública en la comunidad. Necesitamos nuestras escuelas públicas. Necesitamos que nosotros los padres nos mantenamos unidos para traer más recursos, traer más fondo a las escuelas públicas porque charter school, a lo último, lo que está haciendo es destruyendo nuestras escuelas públicas. Gracias y buenas noches.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Nia Garcia and I oppose Mesa's expansion. I am a former student, a parent of a Bushwick High School community student, a parent of a child who attends Brooklyn Latin, and also a parent who attends now Achievement First Bushwick Charter School. I am here today to share a little bit of my experiences with you. I have a son with disabilities that don't allow him to learn as those with special, as those without special needs. Charter schools are not capable of handling students with special needs, IEPs, or those who need so desperately of a second chance. Charter schools are more concerned with their numbers, super high standards, and overworking the children instead of ensuring proper education for all students, especially those with special needs. Students in charter schools are in school for more than nine hours a day. Students only have time for homework, food, and bed. They have no time to just be a kid. And that adds extra pressures onto students. They feel like they have no life. My son was in Achievement First Bushwick High School charter for over four years with an IEP. Nor were they able, they did, they, they, I'm sorry, they still failed him terribly and denied services required in the IEP. Nor were they capable of providing services required for him or students like him. They did not give him the credit he earned because of charter school standards. They lack support for students like my son and those with extra needs. Mesa's expansion will take away from resources from students like my son. Everyone deserves to have options and equal opportunities that suits best for their child or children. Where is all the help and resources due to our children in our District 32? Public school system and all their, and all their upgrades due to them in order to ensure proper education for all? I beg the Department of Education and the CDC to, and to, to support all the students and all of their needs and start pushing us out. Don't let the students continue to be without the resources they owe. We deserve equal opportunity. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Linda Sarieda. I am an eighth grade ELA teacher at Evergreen Middle School for Urban Exploration, AKA EMS 562, a public middle school, not too far. I live in Bushwick. I've lived in the surrounding areas for the past eight years and I want to talk about community. I want to talk about community and empathy. I want to talk about the fact that Mesa Charter School serves half as many, percentage-wise, students with special needs as your average Bushwick District 32 public school. I want to talk about the fact that they serve half as many Ls, English Language Learners, as your average public school. I want to talk about education opportunities for every child in our community. And I want to talk about building empathy for our kids with the most needs and building opportunity for all of our students, which is something that I'm not convinced that Mesa or most other charter schools are going to do, as we have two students in our school right now who were kicked out of charters because they were about to have to repeat for the third year in a row. And we've had students who come from charters because their test scores were not high enough. So it is a zero-sum game unfortunately in some ways because the resources are limited, they are finite. And those resources, if they're being taken by charters, are not serving all members of our community. So that's what I'm gonna leave you with. Everybody have a great night.
Thank you, everybody. All right, announcing the next five speakers. Asking you to come forward again, reminder of the two-minute limit. Thank you to all who have been so respectful in keeping everything moving and making room for everyone else to speak. And please note that if you wish to submit comments in writing, we are very happy to accept them. The next five. Carla Bustodio, Mrs. Banton, Ryan Revers, Mrs. Julian, Mrs. Nava.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna say something real quick. I don't know why we're fighting if we're supposed to be together, right? If we're on the same building. All right? I graduated in 291, actually. I came from 291, but I'm in Mesa right now. So I wanted to say something real quick. It's the fact that we're actually a family if we look at it. Because middle school can't compete with high school. Am I right? Because it's, middle school and high school is different. We graduate from middle school and we go to high school. But it's one thing, I learned a lot in high school, I'm not gonna lie. My language was literally born in high school. Mesa gave me English, literally. I also wanna say, all schools, all schools got programs when I heard earlier that IS-291 got sports program. Mesa do too. And we got after-school programs too. So we also have programs for people who is actually like me, English language students learning, like, literally. I just learned the language here and I'm not even from Bushwick, I wasn't born here. But so far, I'm liking it and I like everybody here. So can we be together for once, please? Thank you.
Hi, I'm representing my mother. I have a little brother in 291 and he is not receiving the education that he deserves. Okay? All right. His English teacher is, that class is overcrowded. All of the classes in the DOE schools, public schools are overcrowded. I had a math class that had 31 students. The teacher did not pay attention to me. I had an English class with 29 students. The teacher did not pay attention to me. I did not feel comfortable speaking English for the longest. I still don't feel comfortable speaking English. But you know what? Here I am advocating for Mesa because Mesa helped me break out of my shell. Mesa helped me. It helped me with that community that raised so much up. And y'all are, y'all keep talking about funding. Well, you know what? Y'all don't know that Mesa does its own funding. Y'all don't know that these students put in their effort to help the, the school grow and keep growing because the students deserve a better education. Some of y'all don't understand what the Spanish speakers were saying, right? Because not all of y'all speak Spanish. Not all of, some of y'all were even making fun of the people that were speaking Spanish up here. I heard y'all. All right? But we don't do that at Mesa. We respect each other and other people. We respect the community. And we will continue to respect the community and we will continue to grow and be better people.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So my name is Nisha Banton and I'm here representing Charter High, Mesa Charter High School because my daughter graduated last year from Mesa and her experience in the four years that she has been here has been phenomenal. I don't live in Bushwick. I don't come from Bushwick. I live in Far Rockaway. My child took the train here every day to come to school and she was on time because she was motivated by the, the education here, by the teachers, the warmness of the teachers that are here at Mesa. I don't know about the other two schools because my children never attended your school, but I'm here to vouch that I do, I am an advocate for Mesa and its expansion for a middle school because I believe that with the middle school, more kids can come in at a younger age and be motivated. My daughter is graduate, has graduated, gone on to college.